All right, I'd like to welcome everyone to the November 1st, 2010 meeting of the Goffstown Board of Selectmen. If everyone would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'm going to go a little out of order here because I know we have people for public comment, so I'm going to read our announcements. I will then take the public comment, then we'll go to the minutes. That's all right, everyone. All right. First is the traffic alert. Once again, Goffstown Public Works Department announces the working hours related to the South Mast Road Drainage Improvements Project. The contractor is scheduled to begin work at 8:00 a.m. and work until 5:00 p.m. The contractor will do its best to avoid unnecessary delays. Residents and commuter traffic should use recommended alternate detour routes to avoid unnecessary delays during the day. Local traffic should be aware that there may be delays associated with afternoon school pickup. This notice along with other construction updates will be posted on the town's website at www.goffstown.com, or you can contact Alex Canin at DPW at (497) 3617, extension 27. This one is, once again, related to the same thing. The Goffstown Public Works Department announces the start of paving on South Mast Street related to that same South Mast Drainage Improvement Project. The paving will begin on Monday, November 1st, and is expected to end on Friday, November 5th. As part of the prep work for pavement, structures will be raised above binder pavement. You've probably noticed that. That is the -- they've painted it in orange. Through traffic, should use caution when traveling along South Mast Road. And again, consider use of alternate detour routes. Last but not least, actually, we got a few more. Geez. It was determined after inspection by the Goffstown Public Works Department that the concrete sidewalks within the roundabout do not meet ADA specifications. The concrete sidewalks within the roundabout will be repaired by the contractor at no cost to town. Thank you in advance for your patience. I believe there was some, I guess there's a certain slope that, and it exceeded it by, what, 2%? Is that?
Exceeded 2%.
And this is specifically for trucks. The Goffstown Public Works Department announces the start of a truck detour for curbing and paving work associated with South Mast Drainage Project. The truck detour utilizing Elm Street will start on Friday, October 29th, and remain in effect until Friday, November 12th. South Mast Route 114 will be open to local traffic and residents, but Public Works Department recommends using a truck detour route to avoid unnecessary delays during the day. Trucks and commercial vehicles needing access for through travel must use Elm Street Truck Detour Route. And last but not least, tomorrow is Election Day. Polls will be open starting at 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. at both Bartlett Elementary School and Goffstown High School. And this is not a press release, but considering the fact that there is roadwork that will be done in and around the high school and in and around Bartlett Elementary School, please remain patient. I know that there will be some delays, so plan early to deal with some of the traffic delays that may be there. We'll try to minimize it as best we can. Unfortunately, we're up against a deadline, which is kind of winter weather. Some pavement of the shoulder went down, of the pervious pavement shoulder went down on South Mast today. I believe curbing is going in tomorrow, so there is a pretty tight timeline to try to get this work completed before the snow falls. And later on in the evening, I will update the community and the board, as I attended a meeting with the construction company and the engineering firm in DPW last Thursday. And as many of you know, we went into non-public session at our last meeting, and I told you that I would come out and brief you, and I will do that later on after a public comment. All right, are there any other announcements? Any? I just want to thank Goffstown Main Street Program and all the businesses in the community and all those residents for an enjoyable Halloween. I know that there was probably about 1,000 kids, right? I feel there was a lot of them last night. And it's a great time by the community, and I know that the residents also enjoy it a great deal. And it's one of those, you know, really nice Goffstown traditions, and it went off again without a hitch. So thanks to, also want to thank the Goffstown CERT. Those are community volunteers, and they spent a lot of time walking around the streets just to make sure things were safe, as well as our emergency responders who did the same, police and fire and others. So just want to thank them for their work with Halloween. All right. It is almost 6:10, so this is a time where folks in the public can step up and make a public comment. All I ask is that you sign in, just state your name and address, and then just, if you can limit your comments to around three minutes, that would be great. All right, so who would like to be first? John. John, I know you, but you can just come on right up here. I know you, John, but I don't know if everybody else does, so.
You can have a seat if you can have a seat.
Yeah, yeah.
John Morris, 51 Sage Court in town. I've been a community member for 17 years, and I've been a business owner in town for probably 12 years. I'm here representing tonight Grasshoppers Garden Center, which we've had established for five years in town, located sort of behind McCoo's area. My common or concern is, a week or two ago, I was headed towards the Wallace Roundabout there. Lot of traffic, waiting, waiting, finally get up to the roundabout, and I see one of my competitors unloading two truckloads of shrubs to be installed. Now, my question is, we as a local business, and Goffstown promotes how much we need business in this community, we never had an opportunity to bid on that, and that is work specific that we do. This particular competitor is from out of town, not a Goffstown resident. He's from Hooksett. He had to drive by my garden center to get to the Wallace Road Circle, to bring you all the shrubs to beautify that circle. Is there in any way, does the town have a preferred vendor list that when you award contracts, that maybe they need to at least give businesses in this community an opportunity to bid on things if we're capable to do that? I'm not asking for the work, just asking for an opportunity to be able to bid on things, just like lots of other businesses in this town offer services that could have been. And, you know, totally out of the loop on that project, and, you know, I'll take some responsibility in maybe not following up on the Dodge reports and things we should have. But it seems like it should be something, for as much as this town wants business in town to help with the tax base and everything, for as much as the businesses give to this community, we are hit up on a weekly, if not bi-weekly basis, to make donations, to cut deals, to help the community. And we do, all the time. And in return, we'd like an opportunity to do business with the town. And it just, it sort of was a stab when I saw all of this material unloaded. And then last week, the same fellow was back there measuring for, there must be more shrubs going in. And we weren't given no opportunity to do that.
I don't know the answer to your question in terms of was this open or preferential treatment, shall we say, or preferred vendor list of Goffstown.
Is there a preferred vendor list to town?
I do not, oh, there is none, in terms of for the town. We do not have a preferred vendor list. In this particular case, the low bidder, which was, in this case, it was DeLore, they then subcontract out. So I, but in terms of, you know, the specifics of was there anything written into that agreement with regard to local vendors giving first shot, I'll have to get back to you, John.
Not even first shot, Scott, just an opportunity to bid competitively with the other people. I'm asking for no preferential treatment, other than an opportunity to bid in the community that I live in, that I own two businesses in. So I'm not looking for any preferential treatment. I'm just looking for an opportunity to be in the ballgame.
Gotcha.
John, I just want you to be aware, we didn't go out to bid for landscaping.
Correct. I understand DeLorean was, who was given the bid. My question is, though, before he's given the bid, is it unheard of for the town to write in their contracts that these are our local businesses, and they should be given an opportunity to bid towards that?
On this particular one, I understand what you're saying, but on this particular one, where it being an ARRA project, we have, we have no control over how that's done. It's our guidelines.
Right, but I think we can, if we have projects, large projects, that we're putting out there, in the language itself, require the vendor to bid certain projects, if there are parts of that contract that we know we have local vendors that provide those services. So we're not asking them to specifically buy from someone, but I think, as Mr. Morris just said, we allow our local businesses to at least be in the ballgame and attempt.
Right, but what it is, is before the contract goes out to bid, that has to be in there, so all parties that see it. But this being an ARRA project, I don't think we had that ability.
Yeah, that's something that I don't, I don't know the answer to, and that's, rather than.
Right, but the fellow who got the bid is nothing different than me. He's a local garden center, just happens to be in Hooksett, so he's not tied into DeLorean, he's not an out-of-state person. He was given as a shot that we weren't given.
All right. We'll get back to you, John. You know, either myself, I'll call you, or Town Hall, and/or, once we get the answer to your question in terms of would we have had the opportunity to put that in, as Selectman DeVanzo said.
And there's been other projects in the community that have required things, and we've never been approached. But we are approached when you need it on the other end, and we're more than happy to do it. But it's hard for me, as a business owner, to say to say a friend who was a, oh, come move to Goffstown. They're a very business-friendly community, when I'm seeing what's happening on my end. You know? And again, I'm not asking any preferential treatment, I'm just being asked to be invited to the dance.
More importantly, in lieu of finding out if we could have for that contract, can we find out?
Did DeLore go out?
No, can we in the future, from this point forward, because that contract's already been a lot out, we can go out and reword that. But in the future, can we go out and make sure that we at least allow our local businesses to have an opportunity to bid on projects?
And that's all it is, is the opportunity. Nothing more than that. Then the ball's in my court. Either I'm competitive or I'm not.
Would anyone else like to make a comment?
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is John Heickel, 483 Mast Road. I was just going to, I came here tonight for another reason, but I also wanted to mention that Mast Road was, in Bernardville, was, I would say, seriously backed up today. I don't know if it stopped, but it was seriously backed up. Traffic was not moving an awful lot of the time that I saw it, and I was there all day. And I just wanted to request that if you are overseeing the construction, or in some sort of way have some kind of an influence, to please make sure the traffic is flowing tomorrow, and make sure that the polls are accessible by everyone to be able to get to from open to close, just so people don't turn around, because I noticed a lot of people actually turning around today, U-turning in the middle of the road to go in some other direction. And we don't want that to happen tomorrow.
As I, thank you, John. As I stated earlier, we do have, unfortunately, a pretty tight construction schedule. We're fortunate in a couple of respects, there won't be any school tomorrow, so that's a good thing. However, will there, will there be, you know, some delays as a result of construction? Most likely, yes. And I think what I'd like to remind residents is that, you know, if you ordinarily leave at a certain time to go vote, maybe you want to leave 15, 20 minutes earlier, especially for those folks who are, you know, if you, you might want to leave work maybe a little bit earlier tomorrow, if you're someone who votes after work, please don't leave it till, you know, a quarter to seven and expect not to be tied up. It could happen. And just wanted to let people know that we'll do our very best, and certainly we'll speak with DPW and our police department tomorrow to try to assist in any regard that we can. But unfortunately, we cannot just cease operations tomorrow, because that's how tight this timeline is. All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, John.
Anyone else like to be heard? You sure?
Who's looking at me?
Anyone? All right. We have quite a lot of minutes to approve. So this might be a little boring for those in the audience, but the first one is October 4th.
Motion to accept.
We have a motion to accept the October 4th meeting minutes. Is there a second?
A second.
Selectman Pierce seconds. Any corrections? I'm not hearing any. All those in favor of accepting the October 4th minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against? Are you, are you yes on that, Phil?
Yes.
Are we unanimous? 5-0. The next minutes are from October 13th.
Motion to accept.
Selectman Campasano, motions. Is there a second?
Yes, second.
Selectman Pierce, seconds. Any corrections? Not hearing any. All those in favor of accepting the minutes of October 13th, say aye.
Aye.
Again, unanimous. Next is October 18th.
Motion to accept.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Selectman Fornier, seconds. Any corrections? Not hearing any. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
5-0. And last but not least, October 20th.
Motion to accept.
Phil, would you like to get into the record somehow?
No.
Yes.
Selectman Fornier, seconds. Any changes? October 20th. All those in favor of accepting the October 20th minutes, say aye.
Aye.
5-0, unanimous once again. Announcements were done. Public comment? Anyone else? If you change your mind, raise your hand. We'll be very liberal tonight with that. All right. 6:30, we're going to have an Eagle Scout candidate, Chris Maloney, here to talk about a proposed project, like we can figure out what it's going to be. So Sue, we'll start with you, with the town administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your weekly meeting schedule is in your packets. We need someone to open and close tomorrow.
All right, I can open, necessary, in the high school, or what do you want to?
I can open at the high school, also close.
I can do both.
I'll open in Bernardville.
Okay. You want to close Bernardville?
Absolutely.
We're good then.
So, did Mr. Pierce say he was going to open in Bernardville?
Open, right.
And Steve will close?
Yep.
Right.
Yes?
Yeah.
He doesn't look like he's saying yes.
No, that's, well, that's our plan. We always have that worked out.
Good. Thank you.
All right.
And the other meeting this week is Thursday at 6:30, Budget Committee.
Hold on one second, while I'm on that one. I will need some assistance, unfortunately, in the month of December, the first week of December with Budget Committee now. Steve, you're usually my backup, so I can get with you, because I have to be away for a whole week for work. So I think it's the week of December 6th, but I'll get with you on that, because there could be two meetings there. Okay?
Okay. And your consensus folder tonight, you have the AP warrants, an event permit for the Manchester Marathon on November 7th, signature of appointment papers for former appointees of the rail trail. You'd already voted to appoint them, but we never did the paperwork. And letter to the school board regarding the SRO reimbursement, and a letter to Linda Lacombe, sorry, regarding Orr Street.
The motion to accept the consensus folder. Is there a second? Seconded by Selectman Campasano. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 5-0.
Thank you. And you have assessa recommendations, a reported timbercut map six, lots 56-2, 56-3, and 56-1, and intent of timbercut on map 10, lot number 29.
Motion to accept assessa recommendations. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
5-0.
Thank you. Appointments. There is an opening due to the resignation of Dan Reedy on Rail Trail. Denise Langley, 70 Meadowlark Road, has submitted a volunteer application, and the Rail Trail Committee recommends her appointment. This would be until March 31st, 2011.
Motion to appoint Denise Langley to Goffstown Rail Trail Committee.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
5-0.
Thank you. There's also an opening on EDC due to Dan's resignation, and Charles Tentis at 28 Noel Crest Ave has submitted a volunteer application and is recommended by EDC.
Motion to appoint Charles Tentis to the Economic Development Council. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
5-0.
Thank you. There are two openings on the Piscataquag River Local Advisory Council, and we have two volunteers, Colas Adams, 16 Wallace Road, and Jim Colbert, 1 Riverledge Drive. The process is for the board to nominate members to the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services for an appointment.
Any motions?
Someone.
Still have a second?
Yes, second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
5-0.
Thank you. This is just a reminder that if you want to attend the LGC Annual Convention, which is 15, is it 15? I've got it on my calendar here. It's the 17th, 18th, and 19th. You've probably received this.
If you didn't, we can do something with mine.
Yep, because the rates go up after a certain date, so if you want the low rate.
November 5th.
How does the board wish to proceed regarding the sightwalk of the 112 acres, which a developer wants to give to the town as part of the proposed Blackbrier subdivision? And also in your packets, the motion made at the planning board, the conditional approval was in there that Selectman DeVanzo was referencing this week.
Right.
Was, we gave you various dates.
Well, I think that's what we're trying to do now, is what?
I didn't get any dates.
Well, I think you had emailed dates. What, you want to rattle some of those off, David?
I can find his email, then. Did you send it to me, Dave?
Yeah, I saw the email.
You know what, we're not going to, we'll come back to that one.
Okay. And finally, with the board's permission, I have a few adjustments to make to the board's 2011 budget. At the budget workshop, a member of the Budget Committee had pointed out that one of the workers' cop lines looked high, and indeed it was, during reclassification. It was, the town administrator's position was put in a higher rating category. It needs to be adjusted down, and the result of that will be a savings of $2,493. The other item we found was in debt service. We need to retire the bond from municipal curbside recycling. This year's last year payment. So there will be a savings there in principal of $85,000, and interest of $4,250, for a total adjustment to your budget of $91,743 less.
There was an increase on the ARRA green drainage.
We got that.
We have that, which is already in there.
Yeah, that was already in there.
It was already in there, okay.
What was the interest on that?
$4,250, in the total of all three.
$91,743.
Yes.
Could we, could we just get?
Oh, you'll get updated pages.
Updated page, right.
As soon as you authorize this.
Okay. You want us to do a motion?
Yes.
Motion to authorize the change in the budget.
Number, seconded by?
Seconded.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And you're good, right?
Yes, we're still looking at the budget.
Okay. As I stated earlier, I just want to kind of give the board and the public kind of an update on this construction project, as it has been a challenge, to say the least. The board met last week, and we talked about it in non-public session, and we did so because we thought it might adversely affect the reputations of members of DeLore, and also members of our personnel. And that's why we did it in non-public. But I'll try to give you an update as to what transpired. The concerns that the town had was the length of time that it's been taking to finish this project. It's been ongoing for probably two more months than what we thought it would have been. Initially, we had been updated by our DPW that there was a delay in cobblestones, that the cobblestones that were ordered were not properly sized, and they had to be custom-made. And that was going to set the project back, I believe, four to five weeks. I think many around the table thought that during that time period, other things would have happened, such as the shoulders and the sidewalks, et cetera. That did not happen. And the board was concerned, as we were approaching winter weather, why isn't this thing going at a little bit of a faster, faster pace? We were scheduled to meet with DeLore Construction this evening. As a precursor to that meeting, DPW met with DeLore on Thursday afternoon, and I was able to attend that meeting to represent the board. I have, I wanted to make sure that I had the opportunity, not only to hear what our DPW has been saying, but also listen to what DeLore's concerns were. There was really not a degree of finger pointing there at the table, that was really more of how are we going to get this project fixed and on track and completed. We're hopeful, though, that next week, DeLore will be in here, and any questions that the board members have with regard to delays, whether it be DeLore, directed to DeLore, or directed to our own DPW, will be properly addressed at that time. There were some change orders, as we all know. There was change orders for the drainage project on Pine Ridge. There was a change order on the reclamation of South Mast, which we approved, so we knew about those. There were some issues with water pipes, that DeLore states were not where they thought they were going to be. And again, I'm just speaking in general terms, I'm not speaking in specific terms. They are claiming that that set them back. Our DPW doesn't think that it set them back, as long as they thought that it set them back. But nonetheless, you know, there is a very tight schedule this week to accomplish a lot of work, and that's why somebody had asked, well, could we, could we just not do any, you know, could we not do construction tomorrow during Election Day? And unfortunately, they're, they've got their curbing contractor lined up, and it's important that we get this project buttoned up as quickly as possible. So I recognize that there will probably be some delays getting to the polls tomorrow. Hopefully, those will be minimally, minimal. So I'd ask people's patience as you go to vote tomorrow, to take some extra time, to make sure that you're there, that you don't, you don't miss any of those deadlines. So that was really the long and the short of it. It has been, you know, at that meeting, not only was DPW there, but McFarland Johnson, who is the engineer, they had someone there who, who else was there? Alex Canin, who is our engineer, and Carl, myself, and a couple of other gentlemen. Megan, Megan was not, wasn't there. So next Monday will be an opportunity for the board. If you have any questions with regard to this whole process, you'll have that, you'll have that chance to speak to both DPW and DeLore. I think that they're trying to work out a lot of these differences now. Another thing that they talked about was the timing of payments. And again, I think that was, that was discussed in terms of when we get their payment, it had to go to a couple of people to get it approved. I do believe we were well within the 45 days in the contract in terms of getting, getting paid. We had, we just received, and it's in our warrant, you'll see that we have a payment to DeLore, but we just, we just got the August and September billings, just last Friday. So, and typically, once it's approved and once it goes over to finance, it's within a day, a day until we sign that warrant. So no more than, than six days before, you know, we cut that check. So that's kind of where we are, you know, with that. And we'll get more specific information, you know, on Monday. But would we have liked it to have gone a little differently? I know I would, I would have liked it to have gone a little quicker, but it just, just didn't happen. Yes, Nick?
Just a quick question. I know last week you had requested that we receive daily updates at the end of the day on how the projects go in.
Right.
I haven't seen those.
Right.
Is that something we can make sure we can?
Yeah, yeah. Sue, can you send Carl a note that we didn't get anything on Friday, nor did we today? And I think this week is a very critical week, Nick. I mean, they have a very aggressive schedule, and quite frankly, you know, I'm trying to remain optimistic that it will be completed. I'm not so sure the, this week, the schedule this week, hopefully the weather will cooperate. I believe there's some rain in the forecast for later on in the week, so we'll see, we'll see how things go. I was told at that meeting that the actual cobblestones would be, would be done next week, that the curbing on the inside of the circle has to also get reset. And Dave, I have to put you on the spot, but you know anything more, since you're the liaison, than maybe I do from my meeting, you're away?
I've been out of town this last week.
Okay, all right. So that's, uh, that's pretty much it in terms of an update. Does anybody want to crack a public comment now? I'll give you another chance. I thought you would, Brad. Come on up.
My name is Brad Parkers. I lived eighty-one South Mass Street. I'm quite close to the South Mass project. And I only want to address one thing today. I have many issues with the project, as you can well imagine, with all the frontage that I have there. And I feel that I've gone out of my way to accommodate the town in any way, shape, and form, and also to accommodate DeLory. But my specific today dealt with, I went out and looked at a couple of the catch basins that they have. The two specifically in front of my house, one where you've requested an easement that I signed, is way out of line. The catch basin sits here. The grate just barely covers it. I pointed that out to Megan and also to Alex. They came down and looked at it, and they agreed that it was not right. But then I noticed that they were still putting down the semi-pervious pavement, everything. And I saw Alex down there and I asked him, well, this isn't right. What are you going to do with that? And his basic answer to me was, we'll deal with that at a later date. And you're just telling me right now, there's not any later dates. And I just want to know how it's going to be addressed. And I'm serious, this is way out of line.
Right, I, I, the, the issue that we're going to have to deal with are, you know, what has been done? Has it been done towards, has it been done in accordance with what the specifications are? If something is not done and has to get redone, in the case of the sidewalk where the slope is incorrect, the contractor is responsible for fixing it. So in that particular area, if it's not done right, Brad, I, I have to talk to DPW and, uh, to get more information on that. But if it's something that they have to come back and fix, albeit next spring, then, then-
The indication that I got is going to have to be redone. Unfortunately, that will involve digging up a lot of what's already put down because of the way the drainage lines run and the way the catch basin that's located there. I don't know who would bear the expense. I would assume the contractor. So as I said, that, that's my concern from today. I do have others, and I- My other question is, if DeLory is here and DPW representatives next Monday, will the public have the opportunity to ask questions?
No, it won't, it, it won't be a Q and A with, with the public, no.
Okay.
So if you have questions and if you want to raise them in public comment during our public comment, and then we can certainly raise them on your behalf, but it won't be an active interchange, exchange, I should say, between, you know, the citizens and, and the two groups. So if you have issues, if you want to email them to Sue or myself or any selectmen, we'll make sure to get, to ask those questions.
The other thing that I had, and I have the paperwork for it, is that I can get myself placed on your agenda to address the issue also. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. That's all I have right now.
All right, thanks, Brad. All right, anyone else? Okay, it's six-thirty, and we have an appointment with the Maloney family. And I know that, Chris, you're here to talk about an Eagle Scout project, so I just want to welcome you. Chris, if you could just state your name and your address for the record.
All right. Hello, I am Chris Maloney, twelve Roy Street. I am from Goffstown's Boy Scout Troop, Troop ninety-nine. For an Eagle project, I plan to build an information kiosk alongside the Goffstown Rail Trail at its crossing with Moose Club Park Road. This location is the first public road trail users from Manchester will cross and will provide information for the remaining portion of the trail. Wood fencing will be installed to clearly define the rail parcel boundary line. This will be identical to the information kiosk near the Parks and Recs building. This project has been favorably endorsed by the Friends of the Goffstown Rail Trail. The abutting homeowner agrees with the location of the fencing. The total amount for this project, including the value of the volunteer work, is estimated to be about one thousand two hundred dollars. Do you have any questions?
This project was before our board earlier this year. And unfortunately, that Eagle Scout candidate turned eighteen before he could initiate the project. So I'm very glad that Chris has stepped forward to put this project back on the front burner.
Any questions for Chris?
Have you completed before you're eighteen?
Nick, you had a question.
I was just gonna say, it looks very nice and good luck going forward with it.
Steve, any, any comments from the rest of the board? I just had, I just had one. I think, you know, the Eagle Scouts in our community have just done tremendous work, and I just want to thank you for your anticipated work. And it's just great to see the improvements that have been made around Goffstown. Not only do we, this project, we have the other one in front of the Parks and Rec Building. There's, I know that there's a lot of work that's been done on, next to, next to a grassmire. I think that's almost, I think that's finalized now, or close to it.
If not, if not, it's-
It's close, so I'm not sure who the leadership is of the Eagle Scouts or Boy Scouts, but, you know, you guys should all be very proud of yourselves if you can just extend our thanks on behalf of Goffstown for your generous contributions to the community. Appreciate it. And we need a motion to allow this work to-
Motion to accept the donation of the Bolden Board of Fencing for the Goffstown Rail Trail at Moose Club Park Road.
Seconded by Selectment Campusano. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You're good to go. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we expect to see a picture of you next to this, next to this completed, all right? That's, that's to be our new tradition, you know. We've got to start to put these up on the walls. All right. See what else we have. Next would be, we've already talked about opening and closing of the polls. I wanted to chat briefly about selectment assignments. I, I received a call from, from David and also spoke to Phil last night. We were passing out candy, and typically, we, we change up our selectment assignments, but this is an untypical year in the sense that we're negotiating for collective bargaining agreements. And I want to, rather than me being presumptuous here, I want to, I facilitate these meetings. I don't make these decisions. So I, if the board wishes to change, we can, I'll, we can certainly do that, and that's what I was prepared to do. But I have heard from, from a couple of selectmen that because we are already, we're involved in negotiations, they're already seeing those department heads in some cases on a weekly or bi-weekly basis, that it, it's not very, it's not really conducive. At this particular point, they're already there talking to them. So if you can just help me make that decision, you know, if we want to go and change things up, I can certainly do that. Or do you wish to continue with these current assignments until January, which is when the deadline is for our collective bargaining? So I'm just trying to get your input as to how you'd like me to proceed, Nick.
I would say March, then, because the next, or April is the next scheduled change. So if we go to January, we should, we might as well stay until April.
All right. Steve, would you-
I agree with Nick.
And then you, obviously you called me, and are you still good with that, Phil? All right, all right, so we'll, we'll continue with our, with our current assignments. And we'll take it from there. I've already updated, already guarding the South Mass Street Drainage Project. I wanted to talk about the other project in town, though, although it's not under, under old business. And that would simply be, work is progressing at a pretty fast pace now on the other side of town in Pinnardville.
I went through there today.
And they're doing their sewer pipe replacement. And they are, right now, they're at the, they're at Hanaford Intersection. I had heard Jim Bouchard, I believe, talk to us during the budget presentation about the possibility of a nighttime, I guess, cross, I don't know what you call that, a crossover or something?
Cross connection.
Cross connection. And I'm not sure if that requires a motion of our board or action on our board to do that, but I think we've got to, you know, one of the concerns there is that you would not be able to get into the parking lot.
To Hanaford?
Yeah. And I was wanting, who does the, you're, you do-
Let me take the action on that.
Would you, would you get some more information on that? And if that requires any immediate action on our part, could you let us know? If we have to call a special meeting, we will. You know, obviously, one concern is that when we say nighttime, what exactly does that mean? And it is, there are at least a dozen homes that would be affected in terms of noise that we have to talk to them about. Or Sewer Commission would have to, to chat with them about. So I just, I wanted that one to stay on the, on the radar.
Just one question on that. Did he give you any indication of a timeframe, when?
No.
It's just, and last time I had a discussion about the sewer project, the cross connections were going to be next spring. Thus, the main trunk line was going to be put in this fall. So I'll clarify, I'll get more information and clarify whether any cross connections are going-
Might be going, they might be ahead of schedule. They work pretty quick.
Yeah, I'm not sure, and, and you know, even if it is next spring, if, if it does have implications with regard to that intersection and nighttime still needs to be, construction needs to be done, then we have to have a plan in place with regard to the, to the neighbors. Okay, we'll go to committee reports. Do you want to just read the EDC minutes, Steve, or you want to defer?
I'll defer. In fact, they'll be here next week.
They will be, okay. Historic District Commission.
HDC did meet.
Yeah.
They had a fairly quick meeting. It was just basically reports on what's happened. Two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary, the other one with New Boston and adjoining towns. That was basically it.
All right, Conservation?
Conservation met last week. We had a, a meeting with Rick Wilhelmy, our Parks and Rec Director, and he basically extended an invitation to Conservation to work cooperatively to develop additional trails, walking trails, ski trails, cross-country type ski trails. And that was accepted. David Niemann also discussed the Blackbrier Woods development, the one hundred and twenty-seven acres that we were discussing earlier, about taking a sidewalk on, and the potential, there are existing trails in that parcel. So he discussed the possibility, if the town were to accept that, of developing those trails within the recreational area. And then we had a, one discussion, recommendation to the Zoning Board of Adjustment for relief from the outer fifty-foot buffer for a subdivision request off of Wallace Road, Jess and Linda Shapiro, which is the-
New Mornings.
New Mornings School. They're, they're subdividing in two of the parcels in order to develop a buildable envelope, need relief on the, the outer fifty-foot buffer, not the inner fifty-foot, the outer fifty-foot. So there's a sidewalk scheduled for October thirtieth, and the commission will meet again on November seventeenth to discuss that recommendation prior to next month's zoning board meeting. And then finally, there was just a request going to the Finance Director to move their investments from a vehicle that's now producing point zero five percent interest to one that's producing point one four, which is miniscule, but still more than what they're currently getting.
Commercial checking to money market.
Yeah. And that was it.
All right, my minutes for the two-hundred-and-fiftieth on my telephone. So I'm going to do the best that I can to read this. Don't make fun of me.
You won't live this one down.
I'm not, I'm not going to live this down.
The summary was posted online this afternoon.
I know, that's why it's on, I don't, on my laptop. That's why it's here. Okay. The two-hundred-and-fiftieth Committee is working, the post office, the Goffstown Post Office is developing a cancellation stamp, which will commemorate our two-hundred-and-fiftieth. So they'll be able to bring a piece of mail, or there'll also be, I believe, in envelopes or postcards, which will say, you know, two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary, et cetera. And that will be done on a couple of dates, Old Home Day and then on June seventeenth, which is the actual anniversary, the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of the, of the town. And they're also doing a collage of pictures that we put up at the post office during that time. Next is with regard to fireworks. And Bill Connor at the Fire Department is working on fireworks and going to be working with different contractors. So we're, we're hoping that by the end of the year to have either an RFP or some sort of contract. There's only a few vendors that do this locally. So we hope to have that before the board for approval. As I said at the last meeting, Tom Sousa of Sousa Signs donated a couple of banner, actually, two banners and a kind of a thermometer thing. We're trying to raise the money for the fireworks. So you'll, we'll be seeing cans around and jars around town, different businesses seeking contributions. So if you can spare some change, or a dollar or two, we hope to, to raise the money for that. Sorry, John. Go to Grasshoppers. There you go.
I did some drugs.
I just, I, I, I just gave you a plug.
John, thank you for the lawn treatment today.
Yes.
The bill was in my doorknob.
Oh, God, this is, this is getting, uh-
Go ahead.
Oh, boy. Old Home Day, where, there's a plan to have a block party. And we're working on this with the Main Street Program, and we're looking about having, we're looking to have a couple of different events going on, musical entertainment on, in the village. And there'll be more information to follow on that. Also looking to have a tour of some of the historic homes in town. And last but not, oh, there's a few other things. There will be a gala ball, which will, that will be at St. Anselm's College, and that will be on Saturday, June twenty-fifth. And we'll get more information as that, that, that date has been set. I just want to thank St. Anselm's College for their donation of their facility. And also, we have, there will be a parade. And our Goffstown Cert has graciously offered to be, coordinate the operations for that parade. And we will get more information out to local groups as that gets, that gets closer. All Cert will be doing that.
Did you say that was the parade?
Yeah, the parade. Judy LeClaire, who, who lives close by here, she is putting out feelers to also have an antique show in Goffstown next summer, and we'll see how that goes. She's, obviously, they have that business, and they're going to see if that might fly. And we are also toying with the idea of having an official photographer to, to take pictures throughout the year and then to sell a commemorative book at the end of the pictures of the year of our two-hundred-and-fiftieth. Kind of very similar to some people do, you know, Snapfish and Peekaboo, where pictures would be taken, somebody would, would kind of compile them, and then they can just purchase them. This way, there's no upfront, you know, purchasing, you know, five hundred books. It's all on demand. And that is it for the two-fiftieth. So you might see some signs around town.
Just a quick question.
Yep.
On the block party, would that be on June seventeenth, the same day?
Old Home Day weekend, yeah. We're trying to not reinvent the wheel, yeah.
I'm sure you said it, I just didn't hear.
Yeah, yeah. I might not have said it, but it's, it's intended to be at the same day as Old Home Day. And it will not be on the actual anniversary of the, of the town. It won't be on that exact day. So anyone who would like to get involved in the two-hundred-and-fifty celebration, please contact Town Hall, give Catherine a call, and then she'll, she'll pass on along that information. That'll be four-nine-seven, four-eight-one-eight. Budget Committee. Budget Committee met last Thursday. And we spent the first hour and a half having discussions about the process. There were a few members who, if you watched it on television, who were upset that the Board of Selectmen did not present a budget for, that represented the ten percent cuts. There was a lot of discussion about that. Some board members felt that they wanted it. Other members felt that based upon the information that they had been given, that even through some department heads who did actually document the ten percent cuts, it wouldn't have been their way of going anyway. So it was not of much use for them, and they would prefer just to make those decisions on their own. At the end of the day, what we ended up doing was we went through the Parks and Recreation Budget, and we also went through the Library Budget. And the plan of action is that on this Thursday, we will, I believe it's Police and Fire, I believe. I sent you a note, right? Police and Fire, and we'll be going through that, you know, kind of line by line. And then the following meeting, we'll be, we'll be doing Administration and DPW. On November thirteenth, we'll be doing a Saturday session. That'll be for the school, school budget. budget. There will be additional deliberations, I'm sorry, then they'll have deliberations and they'll, they'll work to finalize that. So that's kind of where we're at with, with Budget Committee, and I'll get with Selectmen for you, this is a couple of meetings that I just can't, I just can't get to. Any questions for me on that?
So what is the expectation, department heads at the Budget Committee meeting?
What we did essentially is we went line, we, we were kind of going line by line, and, and the board members were asking questions. So let's use Rick's case as an example, they were asking him, why did your pool operations, you know, go up? Now, I happen to know that, but Rick was watching it on television, came down here, and they were able to, you know, ask him, you know, directly, they had some questions about telecommunications and some other things. So it's really more specific to the actual line, why a line might have been overspent, underspent, why it's budgeted the way that it is.
Okay.
You know, will, will you be asked, you know, what are the consequences of a 10% cut in your budget? You probably will. I think for everyone except for the Fire Department, is I don't think we have something from Fire as to, because every, every other department, we did get-
His was verbal, yeah.
What?
He was first.
Right, but after we discussed it, I sent the chief an email requesting that information, so-
Could we get a copy of that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I assumed it had already gone.
No, I, I know, if it did, I, I just didn't see it. And then on the DPW side, we had a long laundry list of, of things that would be cut, but there were no dollar amounts, with the exception of another, I believe was, was the road program. So even though Carl had, had talked about where he would make the cuts to achieve a 10% reduction, there was no dollar amounts attached to it. Sue, yours did have dollar amounts attached to it, the Police Department one had dollar amounts, Parks and Rec did, and Library did. So it would just be Fire and DPW, and I think we, so it pressed that question, we can say we did look at it, and here's exactly, you know, where those, what those numbers are. It may not be what the, the Budget Committee, the direction they might want to go, but it's what you as department heads and what we, was presented to us.
All right. Excuse me, which, which one of the, their sessions are they looking at, the public works?
It's next Tuesday.
Thank you.
Yeah. And all of those Budget Committee meetings are open to the public, and they're all on GTV, on, on peg-on-demand, just like these meetings are. So if you're interested in watching them, check out GTV. Planning Board.
Planning Board did meet last week. Most of the time was taken up in workshop. One of the things that was being discussed was looking at the lighting section, and there were some things that were presented by the planner, and some of the discussion of where they would go was either into the site plan review, and he's probably going to come back with some recommended changes.
All right. One of my questions is that, that the, the Planning Board typically looks at different ordinance changes, zoning ordinance changes, this time of year. Was there anything that is on the radar screen in terms of Planning Board changes?
A public notice just went up today about the period opening.
Okay.
You want to know if the Planning Board was thinking of any changes?
Right, are they thinking of any?
Well, that's what part of this discussion was-
The site, the site review, right. Anything else, though, that?
As of, as of this point, there was nothing specific, but it was asked of all the individual members if there was something that was in there they wanted to discuss, because we, to get in touch with the planner. And we had a meeting where the Zoning Board Chairman had come in and discussed a few things that I had mentioned. I mean, there were some things in there that we looked at, the issue that I brought up a couple of weeks back about the requests, that they've had a lot of requests for chickens in Pinnardville area and residential, so looking at where to allow chickens. And of course, the question is, how come six chickens and no roosters are allowed? You know, I mean, who, you know, and things along that line. So you asked, and I told you.
So you're not going to handle on the chickens?
Hey, listen, they said that every time people came in requesting for have chickens in Pinnardville on small lots, all the neighbors were in favor of it.
Well, Steve, maybe you could ask around.
There's even some for goats.
All right.
Last but not least, HR Committee.
We did meet, and we're at the point now that we're getting ready to go, we, we've talked about benefits, and we're going to start talking about compensation. And part of the, part of the process, that they expect to have some recommendations or requests, that they will come in front of the board once we've completed that process. And I'm thinking that could be, we're hoping December, is that, is that correct?
One other thing, I'm not sure if we ever really reported a whole lot, a whole lot on the, the HR Committee, but, you know, for those of you in the audience who might not know what that is, we, we kind of created it this year. We have many employees in our community who are not represented by a bargaining unit. The Board of Selectmen found that it would be important to start to have a dialogue with all of our employees, and even we have people around the table that are not even, that are members of the bargaining unit, but just to talk to them about what is going on in the community that affects them, and many times there's, are things like compensation and insurance and working conditions, and just to try to establish a dialogue between the employees and, and management, to see if there are anything that we can do to, you know, to make improvements. It's an awesome opportunity for just everybody to understand the positions of, of both the employees, and in this case, the town, and what, what we're facing, so. Just want to thank you, Steve, for attending those meetings, and anything else that we need to, so we're going to, they're going to be going over compensation and benefits and-
Well, part of it, we've been doing the benefit part, where we're talking about vacation time and policies, vacation policies, sick banks, healthcare, et cetera, and now we'll be talking compensation.
Okay. Is there anything, any other old or new business? All right, I'm going to, I'm going to go a little unorthodox here, because we're, is there anyone else who just came in who would like to be heard? I'll reopen up public comment, because we're going to go into non-public in a second, so. Mo, you would like to come on up? If you, if you wouldn't mind, just, if you could just limit the comments to about three minutes, and-
Mine is just a question.
Okay.
I was here before seven, hoping I'd get an update on the Mass Road Roundabout.
Okay, it's going to, it's going to be next week. We, we changed it. It's going to be next week. I gave a little bit of an update just before.
Can we hear that again?
I can, if need be. What I'll do is I'll see if there's anybody else who wants comment, and I will, I will give another, another update. Anyone else like to be heard?
Oh, no.
Okay. Okay, so I'm going to, I'm going to officially close the public comment. And again, I saw people coming in and out ordinarily, you know, we, we have it at like 6:10, but I'm trying to, you know, be flexible.
They had asked when it would be discussed, though when I had emailed them, around seven.
Okay. We, the meeting with Delory that was originally scheduled for tonight has been postponed one week. What had happened was essentially, the board was, had some concerns about the progress of the project, and in speaking with our DPW Director, a meeting was scheduled, actually, a letter was drafted to the construction company outlining our concerns. They responded in writing as to what their concerns are with, with the town. A meeting was held last Thursday afternoon, in which the construction company presented a fairly aggressive project schedule to complete the project, of which a substantial amount of the project was going to be completed, that was, remained, would be completed this week. In light of that, I thought it was my decision to put this off one more week, rather than having a whole lot of finger pointing kind of going on tonight, which I'm not sure would have been very productive. I'd like to see what, what Delory could accomplish this week. Monday, they'll be here, so any questions that the Selectmen have for both Delory and/or our own DPW staff can be responded to. As I said to Mr. Parker, Mo, if you have any, this will not be an open dialogue between the construction company and DPW in terms of a Q and A going back and forth with residents, that those, that Q and A will, will take place between the Board of Selectmen and DPW and, and Delory. So if you have any specific questions, you can email them to Sue or to me, or any Selectman for that matter, and we'll make sure to get those questions asked for you on your behalf. All right? Yes?
Could we also add, have an opportunity after the presentation?
For comment.
For, or for questions, in case there's something that comes up during the presentation that maybe a resident thinks of a question that maybe didn't get answered fully.
Yep, not a problem at all. Going once on the public comment, we're good, all right. So we're going to go into, we have non-public, you have another form of business here?
We were going to discuss the site walk date. Could we do that?
Yes, I apologize. There's a site walk for the Brier Woods development, and, you know, one of my things is that-
Good night.
Good night. Would be, like, could we do this on like a possibility of a Saturday or a Sunday? You know, and, and sometime pretty soon before it gets so cold that you can't even, you know, the snow on the ground.
Between various nonprofit activities-
Yes, I understand that, I understand that.
This Saturday, there's a lot of going on this Saturday.
When we talk about the site walk, honestly, there'll be someone there from Conservation Committee, I would expect. Correct?
This was for the Selectmen, I believe.
I know, but, I mean, I'm-
Someone's going to lead. Yeah, someone has to lead it.
Someone has to lead it.
Well, the developer.
I thought the developer was-
Developer implied that he-
And the second piece, that I know that was, that came up quite a bit during our last conversation regarding this project, and the donation of the land, was the retention ponds, and I don't know if there's going to be, I mean, I know myself personally, as we walked, I'm going to see these retention ponds, there was talk about the lot, you know, the maintenance and the liability that the town undertakes when they, when they bring on these properties. It would, we, you know, I would like to have someone who's very knowledgeable, that we can ask questions on this situation.
The other thing that I'd like to, I mean, I'll, I'll just raise, I, I did, I read, we have a packet in, in the Selectmen, it's, it might even be here.
It's over there, yeah.
And I'd like to, to get something, not, not nearly as big as this, but as big as this, with, can I see where it's wet? Can I see the-
Want a map?
Fit on there. Three quarters of the property is wet.
It's flagged.
I, no, I understand that, I'm just saying, every time that I see something, I get a map, and it shows me a map like that of every single thing that's wet with, with a hundred-foot setback, and I just want to-
You want a map?
I would like to see a map of what this, topo, but what it looks like, but with the, the 100-foot surface water setbacks, you know, there any, obviously there are some wetlands, those, those would be marked, you know, I would assume in blue or whatever color, color it is. And the other thing that I couldn't really gather from the pictures, and because I'm not, I'm not, something, somebody who's spent, I've never been on the Planning Board before, been a rep to it, but how, what is the acreage of these lots? Do we know?
Quarter acre.
A one-quarter acre? You sure about that?
Yes, it's under open space. Open space zoning allows you to have some-
No, that, no, right, and I understand that, because it has to be offset by the space that's around it, but it just seems like, when I looked at the photographs, it just seemed like these, these houses were like literally right on top of each other. It's not in our purview, that's the Planning Board's purview to determine whether or not that fits the character of the community, but that was one thing that was very glaring, you know, to me, was that they looked like, I thought they were half-acre lots myself when I looked at it.
I'm pretty sure they're quarter acre, does that sound right to you, Nick?
I don't, I don't recall.
Quarter sounds small.
Seems, a quarter seems really small, but.
I guess my question is, what do we, what's the intent of this site walk?
I think that's why-
I, I guess, and I understand our concerns, our concerns are where the detention ponds are, who's responsible. If those are pulled out, if, if we make it clear that the town doesn't want to incur the expense and the maintenance of those items, whether it has wetlands on it, doesn't have wetlands on it, I guess, I guess what I'm trying to- I guess what's the intent of our site walk?
I guess what I'm trying to find out is, you know, is this a piece of property that is really, you know, those 100 acres, is something that we really want? Or should we just say, you know what, let the homeowners association deal with it, and let them make it all open space, and then we don't have to deal with anything, it's not our property. It's just something that we want. Does it have future, you know, again, for me, I wanted to see, does this have future use with additional wetland crossing to get to a level piece of ground, and, I don't know, that, that's why I, I would personally like to, to take a look at it, but that would be my, you know, my, that's why the, I asked David those questions, because all I keep hearing about is, oh, it's passive recreation, it's hiking, and, okay, is this something, is this really something that is good for hiking, or is it, or is it so wet, or there's so many other problems that it's, it's just going to be a wildlife habitat, or? I just, you know, I just find it, the other thing that I find kind of interesting is that, you know, this project seems like, it's unusual that a project does get endorsement by the Conservation Commission, and I'm trying to figure out, it's our job to determine, okay, why? You know, not to simply rubber stamp it. Is this something that's good for the community, and if it is, you know, that's great. I've seen other projects where developers have to do wildlife studies, and, you know, I noticed on this project, and again, I don't know how to read these maps, but there were, you know, culverts, but yet in other projects, we wanted open bottom culverts, because we have to have animals migrate through, this one doesn't call for that, and why did, why does this one not, but other ones do? So if deals are being cut between Conservation and Developer, I kind of just want to know, what are some of the issues? What are we sacrificing? Do we have liabilities for the town in the future? And are we dotting our i's and crossing our t's? If we are, great, if not, then maybe it's not a good project.
I, I agree 100% with what you just said, but I still don't see how that site walk is going to answer those questions.
Well, I think for someone like myself, who's not as good with reading these maps and knowing that, okay, to visually see, hey, is this a good, a good piece of, of property for the town to have, and what are some, you know, aesthetically, what does it look like? You know, are there areas that are, look like they're relatively, you know, flat, which we say that we can't develop anything because we can't get a road there? I don't know, I mean, I'm not as good as others are, maybe looking at maps and being able to, to see all those things. So taking a walk, I, I think would help me, we get a better picture of this place. That's my opinion.
And is, did Mr. Niemann express a, a date by which he'd like all this to occur?
They talked a little bit about, well, Mr. Niemann almost implied that next year, but then the developer talked about sooner.
There's a compliance, there's a compliance hearing, I think that's out in, have to look in the minutes, I'm not sure, I think it might be April.
I, I think conditional approvals are good for six months.
Yeah, but there's a compliance hearing.
That's what it was, yeah.
There's a compliance hearing, and I think that's scheduled, it's a date specific, it's in the minutes, and I think, I, I think it's April.
If I had a Saturday free, it would be the 20th of this month. And, you know, I, I don't feel particularly qualified to look at 100-plus acres all in an hour, hour and a half, and make some rational judgment as to its development as a park or recreation. It's going to be very hard to do that.
So what do you recommend?
Well, I, I would like to look at the, the maps first, especially what the chairman asked to be printed out. And I take it the drainage basins are off the table, right? It's, we've, we're not going to be responsible for those.
No, nothing's off the table. If you accept the land, the drainage-
The drainage comes with it.
So if we, so, and I, I kind of understand what Nick's talking about, too, and maybe we could combine the two. If someone, maybe we get a map showing us what these drains are, how it worked, and what it means to us before we go out there.
That might be a good idea.
That's a good idea.
Well, you want to schedule this thing for the 20? That, that gives another, that's almost three weeks, you know, to get that information from, from our engineering department and any other interested parties. Let's schedule this thing for the Saturday. What do you think, like 10? 11 o'clock? Some, or something, it'll probably be a lot colder, I might want to do the afternoon.
Do you think the information of, the map information will decide whether or not you need a site walk?
Not for me.
Why don't we have David discuss it with DPW?
I'd, I'd like to have a working, an understanding of it, you know, how this is going to-
Well, that's what I-
Right, but prior, prior to it, but there's, I, I see no harm in tentatively scheduling a site walk.
Oh, no, 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 no. I wasn't, I wasn't saying it to, I was just trying to say, in preparation for that 20th, if perhaps David was able to get the maps, address some of that stuff, and then he could explain it to us.
All right, so-
I just sent an email to Brian Rose, I'm sure he is in there.
So that, we'll shoot for the 20th.
I'll, I'll see Brian.
Okay.
Any particular time, gentlemen?
I'll look at-
I'll look at what's
Anytime.
Presented to the board.
You're still on, on what
The 20th.
Okay.
If we're going to do it on the 20th, my preference would be the earlier the better.
About like
We'll buy you a hat and gloves.
No, I understand that. What, nine? Let's go 9:00 o'clock then?
9:00 AM.
9:00 AM on the 20th. All right. And I think that's it. We have a couple of pieces of non-public business to attend to and I would need a motion to enter into non-public and that's regarding legal claims. So I need a motion to go into non-public per RSA 91-A, Roman numeral three, paragraph 2E, legal claims.
So, no.
Do you have a second?
Seconded.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.